Ah, it's even better. Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me welcome you to our Board of Trustees meeting. And let me thank all of you for joining us. Let me welcome the university community, the trustees. And this is not only our first meeting of the year, but it's my first meeting as Chair. And when I thought about what I wanted to say to you as my first meeting of Chair, I went to Second Chronicles, first chapter, verse seven. "Right after Solomon was named king, the Lord appeared to him, and the Lord said, 'Tell me, Solomon, what can I give you? What can I do for you?'" Solomon said, "Lord, provide me wisdom that I may walk among the people." And what I have asked for is wisdom, not to lead, but to serve. To serve this Board of Trustees, to serve this university, and to serve this community. And with that, I would like to call on the Secretary to call roll so that we have a quorum, so that I can make sure that my first meeting does come out well.
Thank you. Trustee Roberts?
Here.
Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Ellison? I was told that he just got off Zoom. You see, maybe trying to get back on. Trustee Marchetta?
Here.
Trustee Edwards?
Here.
Trustee North?
Here.
Trustee McKinney?
Here.
Trustee Clark? Chairman Johnson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Next item, I would like to call for approval of the minutes from the December 12th meeting. Can I have a motion on a second, please?
Second.
We moved in second. Any questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Springfield?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Ellison? Trustee Marchetta?
Aye.
Trustee Edwards?
Aye.
Trustee North?
Aye.
Trustee McKinney?
Aye.
Chairman Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Roberts? Minutes have been approved.
Thank you. Next, we have a request to address the Board. We have Mr. Peter Mathers with us today, and would you come forward? As you know, members of this body, that anyone addressed the Board is limited to three minutes. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you for allowing public comments if we have them. I have a long history on this campus. I've taken classes in Millington, Kyerville, Jackson, virtually. And I'm trying to, I was trying to prepare for what I wanted to share, and I remember Dr. Benford Peoples used to teach us to, in communications, to keep it simple, and that 90% of communications is listening. But I've exhausted a lot of my time and efforts with something I discovered in a public records request with the university. And I discovered that requesters of public records geospatial location metadata is collected, okay, and it's shared, and that's illegal. And I didn't know who to take it to. I knew it was wrong. And I started with the state of Tennessee Office of Open Records Council, who investigated it, confirmed it, and gave me an opinion on it. They didn't give me the state law, but anyway, so I kept trying to file requests to learn more about what was going on. And state law tells you that government officials, as they have reminded me here, are not entitled to answer my questions. So I took this information and my research to the state attorney general, okay? And on October 12th, they advised the university, and they also had a team's meeting. But as y'all know, the state attorney general is this university's attorney, so I don't know what the advisement was. But I do think we need to take a good, hard look at what has happened, make sure it doesn't happen again, and make sure that I can get some answers as a member of the community from the people that are guilty of this, not giving me another excuse, okay? Another thing that makes this complicated is that state public records laws require me to enforce the law, okay? And they also tell you to hire your own attorney. Our school of law doesn't teach state constitutional First Amendment law anymore, so I can't find an attorney. There's two in West Tennessee, they're $500 an hour, okay? So I think we need to audit this system. I think we need to bring some people from out of state to audit this system and make sure that this isn't happening to the students, isn't happening to the employees, or, you know, people like me. I'm now a donor of the university, okay? So, and I care about this university, but I don't know who else to take this to, and I've been given the runaround. It's all public record, all my communications, but I think we need to take a hard look, if any of y'all see, that it's an important issue moving forward. So thank you very much for this time.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for coming before us. Okay, we will move on. The next agenda item, agenda item five, is the President's update.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate it. I want to start my remarks by recognizing Colton Cochrane as our new secretary. It's his first meeting as our secretary, and he's off to a great start, and we're glad to have you as a secretary. And I'd like to recognize Melanie Murray for her many years of serving as the Board Secretary. If I'm not mistaken, you've been the Board Secretary and the General Counsel since the inception of the Board. So thank you for your years of service, and she has all smiles back there since she's not up here as secretary. So we do appreciate all the hard work. As you recall, trustees, last year at this meeting is when we approved, when you approved, the new strategic plan. And, you know, since that time, you know, we have worked diligently in implementing that plan, and indication of our progress is represented by the KPIs, which are made public on our website for anyone to see, as to where we're at, our progress to date, and where we anticipate going in the future. A part of that exercise that has taken a significant amount of time over the past year is that with a new strategy, we, you have to make the structure of the organization fit the strategy. And that necessarily meant a change of some of our structure, rethinking some of our structure, and then new leadership in some key areas. And I'm very pleased with the leadership that we have put in those key positions, from Provost Russo-Mono to our new CIO that you met earlier today in the committee meeting, to our new COO that you met, among other positions. We still have two key positions with the SVP for Marketing and Communication and the SVP for Advancement to fill, but I've been extremely pleased with the quality of candidates, both internal and external, that we have put into those positions. Much of the work, however, though, over this past year with the adoption of the strategic plan, has been kind of behind the scenes or hidden, if you will. And you have heard me use this before, but it's similar to building a house, where that first several months or even more than a year is the groundwork and the foundation that you're trying to build to ensure that when the house walls go up, that it's going to be unsolid and it's going to stand for a very long time. And that's how I would characterize what we've done in the last year. And again, I'm very, very pleased with the progress we've made in getting the right team in place and the structure put in place, and I think you're going to really start seeing some very visible changes from that. Now, one of the very visible changes that has been made over the past year from the KPIs is the progress that we've made in research. And obviously, leading up several years to the obtaining R1 in December 2021, there was a lot of work done, but I tell you, since obtaining R1, it has really opened doors that were once closed, and, you know, almost hit $100 million this past year in research expenditures. Just absolutely phenomenal work from our faculty and staff. One area in particular that we have made great inroads in is the work that we do in the defense-related areas, with DoD and with the Army and Navy. And we have Dr. Daniel Fode here with us today, who's going to come on up and present one of the projects that we're working on. So at this point, I'll pause my remarks and turn it over to Dr. Fode to talk about one of those projects.
President Hargrave, thank you for inviting me to talk about some of the research we've been doing. If you can, so I'm Dr. Daniel Fode. I'm in the Department of Mechanical Engineering. And what I want to talk to you today is about one of our great initiatives we've been doing, and it deals with cavitation erosion prevention. I promise this is the most technical slide I'll have in this. So cavitation, cavitation is this phenomenon that happens when liquid water changes to water vapor due to low pressure. So this occurs in propellers, rudders, so in all kinds of naval ships. And when these bubbles, these form, they move and then they collapse, and they create these really strong pressure waves, they have these jets that impact the surface, and shock waves. And so they can, they're strong enough to remove metal from the surface. So I have some pictures over here. In the bottom corner, you could see what cavitation looks like over a hydrofoil. It's these bubbly formations that's occurring. And in the top corner is a picture of a US destroyer. So you could see this eroded material that comes off of this, that's been eroded by these bubbles. And this, because of this, this rudder was eroded, the Navy had to redesign this rudder to prevent this, because these are very costly to repair. So this erosion damages the naval assets and requires expensive analysis, expensive repairs, and so we want to design to prevent this. The problem is, at these large scales, it's almost, it's been very impractical to do for a while. And so we have these models, but we don't have this full scale. So if we go to the next slide, oh, there's this video of some cavitation occurring off a foil. All right, so the next thing is this amazing piece of equipment facility that we have located here in Memphis. It's called the William B. Morgan Large Cavitation Channel. It's on President's Island. It's run by the Naval Surface Warfare Center, Carter Rock Division. And so this is one of the largest cavitation channels in the world that's sitting here at, here in Memphis, that it's, I mean, when I came here, no idea this existed here. I, there's probably many of other people in Memphis that don't know that this world-class facility exists here. And so the LCC is perhaps one of the only places in the world where we can hope to study cavitation erosion at approximately full-scale conditions. So if you highlight, there's on the, this is the corner of the facility. There's a bunch of great people there. We did this tour last year, and then on the right side is a picture of this giant hydrofoil, so it's meters in length that we're going to be testing on, just to give you an idea of the scale that we can do this at. So next slide, please. And so we developed this collaboration with Carter Rock. It's one of the nine naval warfare centers, and they provide all of this support, from design to cradle-to-grave support of surface and undersea platforms. They do their research and development, they support this fleet, and this LCC is part of their Memphis detachment. So they have all these facilities across the country, and one happens to be in our own backyard. So we've developed this kind of collaboration with them, and next slide. And so with the help of the Division of Research and Innovation and the Office of Government Relations and Policy, we were able to propose these projects to our congressional delegation. To run an experiment in the LCC is very expensive. They, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars a day to run something in here with all the manpower necessary. So a traditional grant from the Office of Naval Research would be very difficult to get. So we talked to our congressional delegation, and so the past FY23, we, there's this cavitation erosion prevention add-on in there for $5 million, which we received to do this research. And then FY24, which is coming, which, this is the National Defense Authorization Act, which was passed a couple of months ago, there's $2.5 million, which is part of, which helps us our collaboration with Carter Rock and running these experiments. So we've been able to really do this research because of the help of the offices at our university. Next slide. So these project example objectives of this is to conduct these experiments from the smallest scale, which we can do, to this full scale, develop tools to do this, develop scaling relationships so we understand what's happening. So you have an idea, we're starting from things that are a centimeter scale, which we could do in the lab, all the way up to the LCC, which is this meter squared scale and very large. So it's helping us this wide range of things, and we have large collaborations to do this. Next slide. So we have participants here at Memphis, so with this money, we can, we could fund different faculty members to look at, so the simulation stuff that I do. Dr. Hadazadeh does material characterization, so we can understand the erosion. Dr. Gao does microfluidics to help us understand the bubbles. We're able to hire some postdoctoral associates and also work with graduate students, fund graduate students' research, so they understand naval problems, and then we can train them to co-do these things in the future. And so help build our collaboration, our relationships with the Department of Defense. Next slide. So these are just examples of the ongoing research we have. So I, it would be these computational fluid dynamics, we're just solving these problems on a computer and understand what's happening. This aids in the design of these, these experiments, and it predicts some pressure impacts, material characterization of what's happening, and then how do we generate bubbles so we can control these experiments? So all of these are ongoing, very different, wide-ranging things in the Department of Mechanical Engineering. Next slide. Oh, here's a video of some generation of bubbles. So this is sponsored by the Office of Naval Research. So Dr. Julie Young is our program officer, and she's been instrumental in helping us get all of this set up. We have this collaboration with Carter Rock, because they run the facility. We have their research, their design teams working on this too. And we have collaborators at the University of Michigan. They have a small-scale version of the LCC there, and they have substantial experience doing cavitation research. So we're learning from them as well and bringing that back here to help us grow our research. Next slide. And so the other great thing that's come out of this is we are hosting a cavitation erosion prevention workshop here on campus. I just confirmed it's going to be July 25th, and this will, and we invite experts from academia, the government industry, so including people from ONR, the Naval Research Lab, and Carter Rock is going to, so we have these panels, presentations, and the demonstration, well, demonstration of our ongoing experiments, the experiments from this project at the LCC. And we're going to take a tour of the LCC as part of this workshop. All right, next slide. Oh, the outcomes of this are to understand cavitation erosion, help, so we can do this at model scale, understand the full scale, avoid problems, design better, make better designs so we can avoid cavitation erosion and make things more efficient, and train our students, train postdocs, and train our faculty on all kinds of great research things. So next slide. And so I just wanted to throw this up here, so my research is in fluid dynamics and computational science, so we do a wide range. Cavitation erosion is just one of the things that my lab does here, and so we're, we have funding from a variety of different groups to understand all kinds of turbulent flows and how they impact efficiency, how they impact the Navy, defense, energy, and understanding where fluid dynamics can really help the world and help us understand things. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just an observation. Thank you very much for that presentation. You know, I recall a mere few years ago, when the concept of R1 was presented to us and all the things that we aspirationally wanted to do as a university. And I think for many of us, candidly, it was a little bit difficult to understand how achieving R1 and really embracing research, true research, would aid our university. Your presentation, like I'm sure many others on this campus, makes that crystal clear. You've enhanced the university, you can see the enthusiasm in your eyes about the research that you're doing. You employ additional staff and faculty here at the university. You uncovered an incredible asset here in our city and making it better, and you're making our country better through all that you're doing in defense and other materials. And if this doesn't make us proud to be an R1 university and seek more and more projects, I don't know what does. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you for your support in all of this.
One of the things I was glad to see is that the Tennessee Department of Transportation is one of the sponsors. And if you know, the Tennessee Department of Transportation has probably more funding right now than they've had in many, many years. The $3 billion project to do things in each grand division of the state, so I was very glad to see that.
Yeah, thanks, Kato. I just wanted to add, you know, as somebody who's been here a while at the university, this is a terrific example that showcases how you accomplish something with a team and how the university has evolved. I think everybody's aware of that, but this is an example of action and realization of results. To get stuff like this funded, you have to have a faculty member with a strategic hire, with the experience to do the work. You have to have people like the Division of Innovation and Research helping to open doors to connect us to the Department of Defense. I suspect we also had communications with our congressional delegation, which many of you may have been involved in, including the President. This type of stuff, I can tell you from my own personal experience, I visited the LCC, we'll just say, well over 20 years ago, and I was able to tour it. But I personally was unable to crack that door open to get access to that facility. I mean, it's been here for a very long time, and I can't tell you, it didn't just show up yesterday. And we have tried for a very long time to get research in that facility, but I just want to say it's a credit, because I don't, I'm not sure if everybody appreciates that a project like this is truly a team effort. And, you know, when we create clusters and we have research foci, and you invest in those foci through infrastructure, strategic hires, you have real opportunities for exponential growth. And again, this is an example of that.
Yeah, thank you. You know, this, it certainly is a great example of the doors that have been opened and now the reputation that we have as a university at the federal level. Without our federal delegation, this would not be possible, and I want to thank our federal delegation, because our congressmen and women and our senators, because they've been very supportive. And Jasper and his team have done a great job of building these projects and working with our federal delegation. I was up there, I think it was last week or the week before, and just in the short time that I've been here and the work that Dr. Fode and others are doing at the LCC, it has actually created this reputation that goes beyond that to now autonomous drones in adverse conditions and underwater drones, and they see us as a university from our research that is adding value to the defense of this country. And every one of our delegation that we've visited with is aware of the work we do and really brags about the work that we're doing. And that turns into dollars, which funds more work, which turns into more dollars. I mean, it's really a great virtuous cycle that we find ourselves in, and it starts with the great work of our faculty. And that, that Large Cavitation Center down here, we need to get the trustees down there someday, because unless you see it, the pictures don't do it justice. You absolutely, I mean, the best way to describe it is a wind tunnel with water, with millions of gallons moving through this thing, and it's just absolutely incredible. But we have, I know Senator Blackburn, Senator Hagerty, Congressman Cohen, Congressman Custoff, teams have been down and toured the LCC so they can see firsthand what's going on down there. And it's a place where most don't even know it exists, right? It's not something that you drive by, you have to be driving to it, and you know you're on to something when you drive up and there's guards and razor wire. So, you know, that's your first clue, there's something going on back there. But Dr. Fode, thank you for the great work that you and your team are doing. Thanks for building the reputation for the university, and thanks for the presentation today.
Thank you for inviting me. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, that completes my report.
Next, we will move on to our committee reports. We had excellent committee reports today, so we will start with Trustee Marchetta with the Academic and Student Affairs Committee.
All right, well, I'm going to try to continue with excellent committee reports, so.
We appreciate that.
First off, we, Provost Russo-Mono presented a revised institutional statement, which is required by THEC annually, and the committee voted to approve that, so I'd like to make a recommendation to the Board in the form of a motion that the Board approve the revised institutional mission statement.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
We'll call roll now. Trustee Springfield?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Ellison?
Aye.
Trustee Ellison, since you joined after our roll call, I need to ensure that you can hear us and that you are alone.
I can hear you, and I'm alone.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Marchetta?
Aye.
Trustee Edwards?
Aye.
Trustee North?
Aye.
Trustee McKinney?
Aye.
And Chairman Johnson?
Aye.
The motion passed.
Thank you. We also received a report from the Provost on a list of programs that are going to be terminated at the University of Memphis. Of course, this is an important thing that the university has to do to maintain programs that are vital for the community or of interest to our students, also cost-effective. So part of our process is adding new programs, but also subtracting programs when we need to do that, when that interest drops. So he gave us a list of those. They were graduate certificates. They're not required for board approval, so this is a notification to THEC. So we supported those terminations in spirit. And then finally, you know, I wanted to also recognize the efforts of the Provost and his team, particularly Deb Tovellson, who's their graduate dean, and all of the members, including President Hargrave, for providing insurance to our graduate students. This ties in deeply to the growth of our research enterprise, but it's also the right thing to do. And it aligns us with other R1 universities, and it's been, it's been an effort that's 20 years in the making, as far as I can remember. When we really put ourselves on a trajectory to become a research university, you know, we understood for a long time that we needed to do this, and there have been challenges along the way. The universities are about competing resources, but that's why I think it's important that we credit the team for making this a priority, because I think it's going to make our institution better, so. Chairman, that's the end of our report.
Trustee Marchetta, thank you for your support, and thank you for your work. Excellent job. Mr. Provost, thank you for being a part of this. Next, we will move on to our Advancement Committee, and Trustee Carter, the person is on you to continue this trajectory that we all.
Well, brevity will be the key part of the Advancement Committee report today. This is the, this was the inaugural meeting of the Advancement Committee this morning. We're just getting started, but this is a critical function of the university as we go forward to enhance our giving as a critical part of how the university can grow and achieve excellence as we go forward. We're looking forward to the hiring of the Senior Vice President of Advancement. That process is underway, and we are now down to finalists, so we are working, the President is working quickly through that process so that we can have the leadership and the team in place necessary to move advancement forward. So I'm excited about the committee and its future, but today was a brief report on where we stand and where we're planning ongoing in the future. Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Carter, thank you. And this is one of the committees that we named last year. It's a new committee, and it's one of the committees that is desperately needed and one we desperately need to support. So Trustee Carter, thank you, and thank you for your leadership.
My pleasure.
Now, we will move to the recommendations from Finance and Audit. We recognize Trustee McKinney.
Thank you so much, Chairman Johnson. We had a lengthy agenda.
We had a lengthy agenda in committee today. So as an attorney, you know, we get paid by the letter and syllable, so I can't, from a brevity. So our Chief Information Officer, Jeff Delaney, provided a quarterly update on the information security, information security program. And Chief Deaton, who is our chief audit executive, provided a number of updates. I'll try to summarize quickly here. There was a summary of the audit issues and action plans that were evaluated for completion of the quarter. Very positive with respect to the, all internal audit investigations were resolved. And we reviewed the 2023 internal audit client satisfaction with updates from an external audit report with respect to auxiliary services, the Herf Trust financial statements, and also our university's intercollegiate athletics program statement of revenues and expenses. We then heard from our Executive Vice President, Chief Operating and Financial Officer, Renee Bustamani, who is off to a wonderful start from us with us. He presented the 2025-2026 capital budget proposal and then explained the Park Avenue Campus Financing MOU. We then heard from Greg Dubois, who has served us mightily in interim capacity, explaining the University of Memphis, our university's real estate foundation. We took up three items set for approval from the Finance and Audit Committee. So the Finance and Audit Committee recommends approval for the FY '24-25 capital budget requests. Secretary Cochrane, do we need to approve those here?
Yeah, and it's '25-'26, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, '25-'26, you're right, capital budget request. Do we need to approve those items now? All right. So I'll call for a motion and a second to approve that '25-'26 capital budget request that was approved in committee earlier today. We have a motion and a second on that item. An actual roll call?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Ellison?
Aye.
Trustee Marchetta?
Aye.
Trustee Edwards?
Aye.
Trustee North?
Aye.
Trustee McKinney?
Aye.
And Chairman Johnson?
Aye.
The motion is passed.
Very well. The next of three items was the Finance Committee recommended approval of a motion to enter into an MOU around our Madron Community Development Foundation, as reflected in the materials earlier. So I'll ask for a motion and a second on that item as well. We have a motion and a second. An actual roll call vote?
Trustee Springfield?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Ellison?
Aye.
Trustee Marchetta?
Aye.
Trustee Edwards?
Aye.
Trustee North?
Aye.
Trustee McKinney?
Aye.
Chairman Johnson?
Aye.
The motion is passed.
Very well. And last but certainly not least, we recommended, as a committee, the approval to authorize the creation of the University of Memphis Real Estate Foundation. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion and a second on that item.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Roll call vote?
Trustee Springfield?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Ellison?
Aye.
Trustee Marchetta?
Aye.
Trustee Edwards?
Aye.
Trustee North?
Aye.
Trustee McKinney?
Aye.
Chairman Johnson?
Aye.
The motion is passed.
Thank you.
Chairman Johnson, that concludes the report from the Finance and Audit Committee.
Trustee McKinney, thank you for your brevity. Thank you for getting us through this.
It was a pleasant surprise, wasn't it?
Thank you. In the new business items, we would like to recognize?
Yes, Chairman, I have one additional piece of business that is not on the agenda. I'm going to have to step away from the mic, if I may.
You can.
It has been the tradition as the, a new chairman comes in, means that a previous chairperson is rolling off. And so we'd like to take this opportunity today to recognize Doug Edwards for his service. And as you may recall, Doug not only served his term, but agreed to serve an additional year as we were going through the strategic plan and then started the implementation of that plan. And so Doug, on behalf of everyone at the university, please accept whatever's in this big box. As a small token, but heavy token of our appreciation for the great work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Since we have some additional time. No, it has been a, it's been a real pleasure to serve as chair of this body. And primarily because of the relationships that we've all been able to build collectively. You know, when Governor Haslam put this group together, gosh, I guess it's been eight years ago. We really didn't, we sort of knew each other, but we really didn't know each other and we didn't know, you know, how things were going to work out. And early on, I can recall, you know, we just kind of played things by ear. But we all had the right instincts and we knew exactly what we wanted this university to be. And we knew what we wanted this board to be in terms of a group of individuals who are going to be supportive of our administration and how we went about bettering the institution. You know, for many, many years, we, you know, we were frustrated by the fact that decisions about the future of this university were made by individuals who were not really accountable. And they were made often in the context of things that were going on at other universities and institutions of higher learning around the state. So, you know, I guess my takeaway is this body has done exactly what Governor Haslam wanted these boards to do in terms of helping our administration set a path and a strategy for building these institutions. I think the University of Memphis is better off because we do have the governance of a board of trustees. And it has been my distinct pleasure to serve with every one of the trustees that we've had through the years. And I look forward to continuing to serve the university as a trustee. I will say that I have passed the baton to a very capable individual who will do a terrific job. In the past, we've made light of the fact that one of our previous chairmen had to preside over the passing of our tiger. We've had to deal with chairmans who've seen our presidents resign on their watch. Who knows what's going to happen on Taylor's watch? But he's, but I can say this, whatever it is, he'll be able to rise to the challenge and he'll do a good job for us. So thank you for the box, my propeller. And thank you for the opportunity to serve with this group. It's really, really been really a highlight of my life to serve with you individuals on this board. So thank you. One more thing. She's not here, but I will tell you this. The most important thing that happened on my watch was not something that I did, but it was something that Carol Roberts did on behalf of this board of trustees. She led our search committee that brought us our president, Dr. William Hargrave. I can't imagine anything that would be more important, more consequential, that has to be dealt with by a board of trustees than the picking of a new leader and a new president. Carol did a terrific job. Everybody needs to know that the reason Dr. Hargrave is here, for better or for worse, is that Carol led the effort to get him here, and I'm very, very appreciative. Carol, I can't see you, but I know you're out there, and I very much appreciate everything you did. Thanks.
Trustee Edwards, we all have always appreciated your friendship, your leadership. I have called on you a number of times since I've stepped in this role. And trustee Marchetta and I had the opportunity to be on that search committee. So if things go bad, blame it on him.
Rob Tucker also was on the search.
Oh, really blame it on him. But thank you. And, Mr. President, thank you. Is there any additional business to come before this group today? If not, I have no problem having a motion for adjournment.
Second.
We move in a second? We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.